I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Linda, seconded by Robert, all four. That is six oh. And let the record show that Brooke is out this evening. And I'll do our opening prayer. Pray with me, please. God, we thank you for bringing us here tonight. Thank you, Lord, for getting us to the end of the school. We didn't know what was going to happen, God, but you kind of showed us the direction to go. And we continue to pray for Kobe and Ms. Maria as they heal up from their accident the other day. Just be with those others that may have been in some accidents or different things. God, we come to you tonight praying especially that you give us wisdom, the board and our teachers and our administration. God, just help us to, we know that we have knowledge on some things, but just give us wisdom and help us to do the right thing and do what we're supposed to do. And we pray, Lord, for our staff and our students these last couple of weeks of school, that, Lord, that you would just kind of take us through and help us to be the light that will shine and maybe make a difference. We ask these things of Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Let's get our prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas Constitution, by the Constitution of Texas, one say of God, one indivisible.
So, Lori, time to administer oath of office to unopposed, duly-elected Board of Trustees at this time.
I just need to lay in and Robert, Scott, come up here, please. Each member has taken a pre-oeft statement, so now we're just going to take the oath of office. And I'm going to repeat it to you, and then I'm going to put your names in, and if you will, just raise your right hand. And then when I look to you, all of you raise your right hand, and then you're going to say, "I swear." Okay? So, in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, you, Robert Taylor, Leanne Ramsey, Scott Newsom, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee of the State of Texas and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So, help you, God.
I swear.
I swear.
I swear.
Congratulations.
Okay, we move on to item number three, reorganization of Board of Trustees Officers. So, says that we, after the first meeting, after each election and qualification of trustees and members of the board shall organize by selecting officers. Also stipulates the terms and duties of each officer. Officers shall be elected by majority vote of each member presenting and voting. It is recommended the Board of Trustees elect a president, vice president, and a secretary in accordance with B-D-A-A legal. Is there anything in here on that, Lori?
There is a policy.
Okay.
But as far as the format?
Uh-huh, no format, just, well, there's probably a format on this other deal.
Yes.
So, we'll just go about half informal. And at this time, I'll take nominations for president.
I'll nominate you.
Other nominations for president? All for Aaron Sanders. Any six oh? Thank you. At this time, I'll take nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate Josh.
Josh Jordan. Any other nominations for vice president? All for Josh Jordan, vice president. Six oh.
Has it down, has it all?
Yeah, sure. Take nominations for secretary.
I'll nominate Brooke.
Brooke Lassell. Any nominations? All for Brooke Lassell. Okay. So, there is no reorganization of the board at this time.
When the organization was the same, yeah.
Okay. Thank y'all for trusting us with what we have. Item number four, Max, is there anyone for, anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Great, okay. Okay, so we are at this time, going to do a recognition.
I ask that Coach Floyd come forward. We are, we want to recognize, we do our best to try to make sure we recognize each student athlete that participates in a state event. So, I'm going to ask him to come and introduce and tell a little bit about Ms. Laney Wright, our state qualifier golfer.
Laney Wright finished this season with a probably stroke average right around 85. Really good player. I had nothing to do with her and her dad, who were the ones, I drove the bus and got her to the tournament. So, anyway, she finished second in district behind the young lady that actually won state tournament individually. She finished fourth at regional and finished 27th out of 70-something players in the state tournament. And I think first, to my knowledge, first girl that, from Mount Vernon, that's played in state girls' golf tournament.
There you go.
And she's a junior, yep. Before we stay out of her way, she'll, uh...
Let's keep, stand behind her and get a picture. First one, kind of stand back here behind you.
I don't mind.
You'll have to have your cameras go in there, Laney, just pick one.
Uh, no, it's good. One, two, three.
What are you giving her, Coach? What is that?
Let's shift the mic, Sam.
Ms. Laney, would you like to say anything?
It was fine.
Mary, thank you for being here with her tonight.
All right. Time to go to item five, consider approval of the consent agenda. Any questions on that consent agenda? If there's no questions, then we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Robert, seconded by Linda, all four of that consent agenda. It's a six oh. Action items. Item A, consider approval of innovative class, general employability skills, career development for eighth graders beginning in 2021, 2022. Tell us some of this.
May I ask Ms. Sumro to, uh, to explain that to you, please?
Uh, innovative classes are what we would like to do in the middle school for seventh and eighth grade kiddos to choose from as an elective class. And the definition for innovative courses, they allow districts to offer state-approved innovative courses to enable students to master knowledge, skills, and competencies, not included in the essential knowledge and skills of the required curriculum. So, that's why they call them innovative courses, because they're not in the required curriculum at this time, but they are approved through the state. And with the approval of local school boards and trustees, we may offer state-approved innovative courses for state elective credit only, for that being said, state elective credit. And this course is called the General Employability Skills. And as you hear the words, "General Employability Skills," that's what we're all striving for, is to educate our students into the workforce and to help our community, of course, for them to have families and to improve their quality of life. The course description says, "This course provides students with knowledge of the prerequisite skills for general employment, as well as the means of obtaining these skills. Employability skills include fundamentals of maintenance, of personal appearance, and grooming. The course also includes the knowledge, skills, and attitudes that allow employees to get along with other coworkers, make important work-related decisions, and become strong members of the work team. Discovering job possibilities that link skills, abilities, interests, values, needs, and work environment preferences is a part of the process of obtaining employability skills and abilities and experimental learning that takes place over time. As I teach the career prep class now, it would be nice to start this in middle school because some kids have a long ways to go because they don't have practice in this. And as you know, kids in high school that have jobs do learn people's skills and learn to be on time and use that time that they have at work to their advantage. So, this would be great to start at the middle school class with your approval."
Is this for all seventh and eighth graders?
Yes. It's just for them to choose, it's not the required course.
I mean, Rice would break it for that.
Yes.
You know, and so part of it will help with, one of the soft skills that, uh, that do not seem to be as common these days is what we, what we would like to, so that's, I think that will help with, in that regard as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Sumro on that? Is this your only time to be up here tonight?
No, I've got one.
We'll really grill you in the next.
Okay.
So, I've recommended that we approve the Innovative Class, General Employability Skills, Career Development for the Mount Vernon Middle School campus, beginning in 21, 2022, as presented. Do I have a motion if we approve that? That's a motion made by Leanne, seconded by myself, all four. That's six oh. Item B, consider approval of revised MBISD Wellness Plan, beginning with the 2021, 2022 school year.
Because of Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act of 2010, we were required to create or have a policy, a wellness policy in our school. And we do have that, and we look at the FFA local, and we have our policy here. Going along with that policy, we are required, the SHAC committee must create a wellness plan to enact the things that the policy requires. And what we've done here is, I put one together, and following the TASB model, you see it in your, uh, in your board book. It's a living, working document, so as time goes by, we see things that we need to improve on, change. We can do those and bring it to the SHAC committee towards the end of the year, ask them to evaluate it, and then we will take it to the board to approve if there are any changes. If no changes, then it doesn't go to the board. But with the wellness plan here, there are some goals that I wanted to go over with you and tell you about. Goals for nutrition promotion, which is, we're going to be working with our teachers and our leaders and our child nutrition department as a group to encourage nutrition in our district. The next section would be implementing goals for nutrition promotion. That means we're promoting healthy messages, things hanging up in the cafeteria. The one I love the most is when the students walk by in the glass window and they see the pretty fruit and the vegetables, which would really encourage me to want to grab that and eat that. So, we want to promote those things to those students each day. And then during the day, selling the nutritional items that were required to sell. Because of USDA and the TDA, we have strict requirements on what we sell during the day, and those follow the Child Nutrition Act. Goals for nutrition education, we want to promote those healthy eating behaviors, integrate the nutrition into other areas of the curriculum, and then we want to, uh, we want to improve the knowledge that the teachers have of the nutrition at our school. So, as long as they know, they can tell the students. Goals for physical activity, required PE minutes, plus some more that we meet each day through all campuses. We want to integrate nutrition into areas of curriculum, such as our health science department and our biology department, and other groups throughout the campuses. And, uh, and again, improve on teacher professional development. Goals for physical activity, required PE minutes, I'm kind of going over myself, I'm being redundant. Credits for physical activity, athletics, band, and cheer. So, those students who work, who participate in athletics and band and cheer, they get credit for that at high school. Integrate physical activity into the curriculum. Before and after-school activities, maybe lifting weights, basketball practice. Staff activities that we offer, we do blood screens, we do the program Latin of East Texas and flu shots, which Tracy's probably going to talk about these here in just a moment. We encourage them, or they see other teachers working, walking in the parking lot on the track, and that kind of encourages everybody else to want to do the same thing because it's, it's safe. We also have the turkey trot and the turkey bowl, and Dad's Night there at the elementary, and that, that has a lot of physical activity involved in that with families, so they can work, play with their students. Community use of school facilities, using the trash or the gym, or they practice on school properties, such as little dribblers or a football, little, uh, little, little lily football they practice on our campuses, our, the grassy areas. Goals for other school-based activities, we want everything to be clean, safe, and comfortable for our students, so we make sure that that is taken care of. And with us having COVID, I think we've got a pretty good plan going. Thirty minutes for lunch for each student, hand washing stations and hand sanitizing stations for students before and after lunch, encourage families to play together, such as celebrations. We have our SHAC committee meetings each two or three times a year, and we, we're trying to encourage participation in that as well. We'd like parents to come to that. Health intervention programs for employees, such as, for students first, asthma unit, our immunization shots and our flu shots for our students that we offer. And then providing mental health awareness, such as we use Hannah Speaks for suicide prevention. We also do the ISTEAM program for our students. And then the food and beverages sold, we, we follow the guidelines there where there's no, no sugar in that. We have six days of exceptions for fund raisers for each campus, they get to choose their days. And then snacks, if snacks are brought to school, we would like for those to be in a, in sealed packages, individually wrapped. So, just because of the COVID and the safety, we would like for that to be part of our wellness plan. And then at the end of our SHAC committee, we always evaluate our rating, our, our bonus plan, which came out as a proficient rating, and we met on April 26th to do that. And for public notification, we will put the wellness plan, our local policy, and the evaluation on our website. All right, and that's, that's it for the wellness plan.
I think I can say for Ms. Sumro.
Thank you.
Need a motion that we approve districts' revised wellness plan as presented? Motion made by Robert, seconded by Scott, all four. Item C, consider approval of proposed 2021, 2022 teacher salary scale. Doctor?
Yes, sir, thank you. Praise to you tonight, as we are continuing to look at as a district in regard to recruitment and retention, one thing that we found, even after we, you approved the salary scale two years ago, following the requirements of House Bill 3, and what had to be done to get our salaries where House Bill 3 requires to, what we have found is that we are still not as competitive as we'd like to be with some of the neighboring districts in regard to who we compete with teachers. We have put, we've inserted in your board manual, uh, the salary structure for both Mount Pleasant and Sulfur Springs, who both are within very close driving distance and who we compete with. We currently have several openings throughout the district, and just specifically for our high school English positions, we are having a, we are not getting the number, or the quality of applicants of what we would anticipate, what we'd like to get. Through some conversations some of our staff have had with others around, even in the English world, what we're finding is they were, they were willing to go to one of the other districts for more money. So, therefore, what we have done, we've tried to put together another proposed salary schedule that, that includes substantial increases all the way from a brand-new zero-year teacher to, all the way to our, where our pay scale tops out in year 28. You can see those there for you in regard to the increase of what they would be for each one of those. Our, um, so I'll leave that. It goes from a zero, zero-year teacher, starting out currently at 36,160. It moves that to be 43,000, which becomes way more competitive, 43,000, which becomes way more competitive with the districts around us that I spoke of. And you see the increases that go all the way there. We, we catch up, our surpass both of those bigger districts at year 10. So, again, it's not just for recruitment of trying to get quality, but also retention of trying to keep quality educators in Mount Vernon, because we understand that the quality of a teacher is going to inspect, is going to impact the quality of education with our students. So, make the recommendation based upon the proposal you have before you for the new proposed schedule for 21, 22. I had Leanne call and asked a question earlier, so I'll address that as well, is kind of what is the plan in regard to how that will be paid? With, with, um, Estor funds, the federal funds of the round three stimulus funds that we're receiving, it gives us kind of two years' worth of grace to see where we come out of COVID in regard to increase in our enrollment. If that doesn't, I will say that this time next year, we will have to look at absorbing some positions to get us back in line in where we are in regard to staffing versus enrollment. Then we have another year that if we don't see any other increase in enrollment then, then we would have to absorb some more positions at that time.
So...
But, I'm sorry, one more thing, Ms. President. The Mount, originally when we first looked at it, the first one we looked at, Ms. Van Dever asked her to see what would, what changed. We're talking about a $325,000 change. We've made a couple more adjustments since that time, so it's really a little bit more than that, but, but not too much so different from what we have right now.
What's this column here?
The column here is the yearly increase each step.
And I know you, few of you here are teachers, but you're not looking at what we're looking at. This is a pretty big jump from what, where we're at, so that's pretty great.
I would say, just for an example, for a, for a year 15 teacher moving to, for a step 15 moving to a step 16, at the current salary schedule would be less than an $800 increase, but with this proposal going from step 15 to step 16 is a $2,500 increase. So, there, there are increases across the board, significant increases for each level of, of teacher that we have. And this is on top of the increases from two years ago as well.
So, if our enrollment stays, our increases would be okay, but if it decreases, then we'll have to cut stuff.
What I'm saying is if our enrollment stays static where it is right now, we'll absorb positions next year. The only way we don't, and we're going to have to, so what we're going to look at, our enrollment right now is about 1495, and our staffing is currently based on pretty much what enrollment was when it was around 1600.
But we're not going to be doing anything to anybody because everybody else is already competitive, so I don't see anybody else not having that. No, one of them, you know, we're going to do all we can, but we're not going to put everybody in any situation that they couldn't go somewhere else, try to get out of, and we can be very competitive. Any other quick questions on that?
So, we're going to cut the staff, not this next year, but after two years of the federal law, or is that not for this across?
So, I think from a planning standpoint, we've got to look at it as a, as a way of, instead of trying to cut eight to 10 positions in one year, I think that we try to do that, if, if our enrollment doesn't grow at all, then I think that we begin to look at a couple positions, three or four positions, after this next school year.
After this next school.
Correct. Well, I mean, at this time next year.
This time next year.
This time next year, yes, correct. Yes.
Yes. We're not looking, correct. Correct. After the next full.
Correct.
After the stimulus fund.
Correct.
That keeps us safe.
Correct.
For this year.
So, take your decision, bring us some more kids. Hundred kids, and we'll just keep on going.
The Ramses have to contribute a little part.
So, follow the Ramsey model, is that what you're saying? Not they bring with London.
I make a motion that we approve the 2021, 2022 TEA reading academy registration amount by region eight for elementary K4 teachers. Ms. Wax, you don't want to examine on this one?
Good evening, all. One of the changes under House Bill 3 that the state implemented in last legislative session was to require all K3 teachers, so a teacher that teaches any students in kindergarten through third grade, to attend the Reading Academy that has been created through the State of Texas and is implemented through the Region 8 service centers. So, with that, we also have a deadline to have all of our teachers trained, which is the 22, 23 school year. And so, looking at that and looking at the impact, obviously, on Mrs. Orin and elementary teachers and substitutes and getting substitutes in the classroom, we embedded that, as I mentioned, when we approved our academic calendar, we embedded those Reading Academy dates in so that all of our teachers could attend together and so go collectively as a group to attend to this and include that. The fourth and fifth graders, excuse me, fourth and fifth grade teachers are encouraged to attend. It is not in law at this time that it could, with this legislative session, be added that fourth and fifth grade teachers also attend. So, our fourth grade teachers will be attending with our K3 teachers. We only had one teacher that got, got the get out of jail free card, and that was Coach Marwood, because she was EC12 PE, she does not have to attend, and our pre-K teachers do not have to attend. So, those are the only ones that will not be attending in that. So, the recommendation is for the registration amount of $115,600 to pay for that registration cost for those teachers through the academy.
So, does TEA profit all of this the most, or?
I'm going to abstain from answering that question. Quite a cynic, being in education, so someone always profits.
This is mandated, so.
It's mandated.
You have to do it.
And we are not alone, I'm not sure, I haven't polled the audience around us, but I do now see via social media quite a few teachers in surrounding districts that have made comment about having to attend, so we're going to have a bunch. And I was glad that Region 8 worked with us because we created our own cohort in essence, because we're sending all of our teachers. So, we've secured wide registration spots for this year, so other schools couldn't do that.
Okay. Yep. All right. Any further questions on that? Anybody want to make a motion that we approve the registration amount of $115,600 for elementary K4 teachers to attend the TEA Reading Academy by Region 8 as presented, because we have to?
Because we have.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Robert, all four. Six oh. Item E, consider approval to adopt and purchase curriculum for reading horizons for K kindergarten through second phonics program. Is this K through two or K through three?
It is K through two. We already have a system in K, or, excuse me, in 3, 4 that we're maintaining.
Okay.
So, we're only implementing this at K2 at this time.
Okay.
This was another requirement of House Bill 3 that was for districts to adopt a K3 phonics curriculum that used a systematic, direct instruction model. We did adopt a phonics program with our E-LOR adoption, which was the Fountas and Penel Word Study and Phonics. And I'm going to say this right, because I'm the only elementary teacher in here tonight. And so, we're working with that, we did training on that, looked at that. That would check all of the boxes that we would need for that. That was getting some mixed emotions as far as its effectiveness. And so, working with Region 8, we worked with Dr. Fortenberry, we looked at what other school districts around us were doing. Mrs. Orin and Desiree Phillips spent a lot of time and kind of researching, again, what was going kind of around us and if there was a better system specifically for that foundation phonics, which is where... That was getting some mixed emotions as far as its effectiveness. And so working with Region 8, we worked with Dr. Fortenberry, we looked at what other school districts around us were doing. Mrs. Orin and Desiree Phillips spent a lot of time and kind of researching, again, what was going kind of around us and if there was a better system specifically for that foundation phonics, which is where the teachers were struggling. So we found Reading Horizons, which is why we are only implementing K-2, and we are maintaining grades 3, 4, and 5 with our existing system. So again, just to make sure that we have something that the teachers have buy-in. Heart's Love is also using that. We did go onsite to see Heart's Love in action and their implementation. And so they are having a lot of success with their program. So we hope this was beneficial for our students as well as our teaching staff.
Okay.
There's also coming out of instructional materials a lot.
Okay. Any more questions on that? Need a motion that we approve to adopt and purchase curriculum for Reading Horizons kindergarten through second phonics program for $27,537.30. Motion made by Leanne.
Second.
Seconded by Leanne, all four. That ought to put us up to about a half million so far we've been asked. We're still not done. Well, let's look at some student insurance care. Student athletic and activities coverage and catastrophic coverage insurance.
Okay, each year, the last several years for sure, all that we have purchased from the school's standpoint is catastrophic coverage that covers just that. This year, we wanted to bring to you for the opportunity to look, after a couple of years of some injuries and some different events of students who do not have family insurance, we want to bring to you the opportunity to see if you would be willing to, for the school to cover or to invest in a school insurance. What this is, is it includes all UIL athletic activities, cheerleading, band, drill team, vocational classes, ROTC, which we don't have, FFA, 4H. Those include cheerleading, band, drill team, summer camps, and day field trips for pre-K through 12. I called and asked some of the questions in regard to it. It asks, for a student who does not have insurance, it is their primary insurance. They're not a deductible on it. It would take over for that student in an instance of their accident. For a student whose family does have insurance, it would serve as a second insurance for them to help with that. I think we're one of the few districts around that does not provide this type of coverage for students. The company that might, would be my recommendation, Texas Student Services, serves many of the districts around us. And as I've talked to several of their superintendents, they're pleased with the response of what they have. My recommendation out the information you have, it shows you on the Texas Premier, page 54, shows you the things, the types of things they cover and the coverage of it. I don't think there's a large enough difference between the Texas Premier and the Premier Plus to offset the cost. So it'd be my recommendation to do the Premier Plan for $1,4195 plus the catastrophic board that is, if something were to happen catastrophically, for $1,608.
For October 15, 803?
Yes, sir.
So question, a couple of questions.
Okay.
Does this cover like students at practice or is it just events?
Correct. No, it'd be practice, anything dealing with that UIL activity. So it'd be, yes, practice games.
What about freshman students in the shop welding?
Correct.
Okay. So it's a pretty broad range.
Yes, it does, yes. It does include, as I said, it does include vocational classes.
Okay.
We had, we received quotes from three different companies, Texas Student Resources.
Did we have some coverage from them in the past few years ago?
I think we have. The other was the brokerage store and Brookstone was the third one that we received information from.
Did you say we have or have not offered?
We, I don't know from my standpoint if we've offered it. Anybody else know that's been here for a while? Full coverage. I know we've offered the catastrophic, we've kept that, but I don't know, I want to think that it was possible that one time they carried the full coverage, yeah.
I'm just saying they'd offer it for the students to.
There is a national case that students can get additional insurance on top of this, correct.
What was the name of the company you referred to?
Texas Student Resources.
But this is like, students aren't purchasing it.
No, what we're doing, this will be, they'll have, they'll have the opportunity to purchase additional insurance.
It's a voluntary plan. It'll go out, it'll cover anything that happens during school. You can actually buy it for a 24-hour coverage and it's cheap, it's like $25, $50. But that's a voluntary plan, the parents achieve that. This is just covering athletic.
Just a blanket coverage for the issue.
What about deductible? If something happened, does there?
Since there was not one. Correct.
That's that, all right.
Yeah, but not, sorry, yes, but not on the athletics activities.
Any further questions on that? So we need a motion to approve the Texas Student Resources Student Athletic Activities Insurance Proposal of $15,803 for UIL Athletics and Activities and Catastrophic Coverage as presented. Motion is made by Robert. Seconded by Scott, all four. Six oh. That was item F, so we'll move on to G. Consider approval of revising regular board meeting dates and time.
Yes, sir. So when I first started here, I think it was already was, the regular board meetings was scheduled for the second Monday. At that time, in this office, we kind of talked about the possibility of moving it to the third Monday, having a set time, giving this off a little more time as well. Ms. Pam believes that they can get their things taken care of on a quicker timeline. Also, if you look at next year's adopted calendar, the month of September, Christmas, January, February, April, and May all has either a holiday or a bad weather day on the third Monday. So we would have to be rescheduling if we were to hold the current practice, each one of those meetings. So the calendar lines up better for us to move back to the second Monday. So I propose it so that we're not having to move so many. Still with this, we would still have to look at the October board meeting and March board meeting during spring break. But I think looking at moving two instead of six makes a lot more sense. Gives us a set time that hopefully we can keep and that way the public knows when those meetings will be as well. I think the week, since we've adjusted over the last couple of months to the 5:15 board meeting time, I think that's worked pretty good for everyone involved. And so it'd be my recommendation that our set meeting dates would be the second Monday with a start time of 5:15 PM.
Any add on that? Make a motion that we revise our regular board meeting to be held on the second Monday of each month, 5:15 PM in the high school lecture hall. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Robert, all four. Six oh. Item H, consider approval of revising our 2021, our 2020-2021 academic calendar.
Okay. Mr. President, you asked me to begin to look at the possibility of amending our calendar again here at the end of the year. So we've done that. I want to bring out a couple of things in regard to that. When we, we had an original calendar that we approved back in February of last year that we amended it in June after we've been out of school since March. That calendar did start students earlier, started, I believe, on August the 6th. We built in additional minutes to that calendar just to, well, really with the unknown, partly of the unknown of COVID, what will come about that, allowed us to have some flexibility in that. We had about 11 days' worth of minutes built in, plus the two bad weather days. We started early because we believed it was better from an instructional standpoint to get our kids here, give our teachers more time to work with them, and we approved that at that time. By doing so, by giving more instructional minutes during the day, decreased the number of teacher workdays. On a normal year, you know, you're going to have 15 to 16 teacher works slash staff development days. In this calendar, I believe there were only six because of the additional days. Throughout the school year, we had to make a few more adjustments. In the month of September, at the first of the, at the end of the first six weeks, you approved us to take off the days of September 17th and 18th at Thursday and Friday that led into what was originally a staff development day on Monday, the 21st. But we made some adjustments even there as well. And we swapped the October holiday with that September day and made the October day a staff development day. So we had three additional, well, we had two additional days that we, that everybody got off there to have a five-day weekend. November 20th, we had a half-day early dismissal for a football travel to a playoff game December 4th. We had another half-day, and in December the 11th, we had a full day all for a travel football game as well. And then we have amended the calendar in January to give, to add February 12th as an additional day off for everybody leading up to that weekend in which February 15th was a day off. As we all know now, because we all lived through it, that was also the week that we received lots of snow and ice. And so what turned out to what we thought was going to be a four-day weekend turned into basically a, let's see, what does that make it, about a 10-day weekend, almost, put it all together. But in doing so, that was five additional days of missed time that came out of that schedule. But we kept both bad weather days, did not take those off. So in essence, we have amended the calendar nine, nine of those 11 days that we had built in time. So at your request, I did take a look at this, got with leadership, and looked at options in regard to the possibility of amending that last week. What we looked at was, we talked about even half-days. Leadership felt that half-days would not accomplish what we thought was going to be accomplished. So came up, so it'd be our recommendation to amend the calendar by doing so. Would be that the students' last day would be Tuesday, May 25th, and teachers' last day would still be Friday because of the 187 contractual days that they have. So students' last day would be Tuesday, and teachers would still be required to be here Wednesday, Thursday, and a half-day Friday.
How many days and minutes do we have left for our students? There are two weeks, right? Two weeks of minutes left?
No, no, just, no, just that went through there. We've used, our original calendar had about 11 days' worth of minutes banked in there. We've used nine of those days, so we have roughly two days of minutes left.
Okay. So for the camera, we have two days of minutes left for our students, so we count that out the whole week.
No, sir.
Because that's a misconception that we've got some emails on as we have.
I understand.
You know, we should have been done two weeks ago or back in April or whatever, but we don't. We have two days of minutes left. And we thought at this time, when we were building our calendar last year, we thought we would be looking pretty rosy right now that our other districts would be going to school in June. We started up, we didn't want our teachers coming to school teaching kids in June. So we built our calendar around those days we can remember. And now through some breaks and some different things, other districts kind of look like they're doing better than us, but doing some checking. They don't get out, some of them any earlier than us. The ones that are getting out earlier than us are going to school until 4 o'clock. You can do a poll and see, but I don't really want my kids up here till 4:00. So that's out.
And they didn't make it to playoffs.
They didn't make it to playoffs. Well, but then again, you know, something that we, that is built into our calendar that a couple of other districts don't have is we have the day off in October. And for this present school year, you know, we came back a day later than everybody else at Christmas as well. And then we had that one day that had been built in already in February as well. So that's three, you know, that's three days that our, that our district gets breaks throughout the year that other, that some other districts are not taking.
And I kind of think the breaks in the middle in October and February are pretty good myself, a long weekend here and there. But I promise you, we're not going to make any teachers work any more days than any other school districts around. Actually, when we look at the numbers here, so here, Board, we're looking at, if we go till, if we go through half a day on Wednesday, we will have paid for 187 days in the contract as a teacher, but we only will have had to work 178 days. We did a $500 bonus this year, or whatever we want to call it, a thank you in March. So plus we just kind of approved some pretty big ratings right there. But I think, you know, we want our teachers to know that we appreciate them. We're going to do all that we can for them. So we've looked at it and logistics will work out right to where we can go to school Monday and Tuesday. We can let us kids out Wednesday and half a day Thursday. Teachers still have to show up to work. If teachers aren't here, they're going to be the ones that's going to cost us, cost us, but makes everybody else look bad. So you're going to have to have your staff and principals taking names, I guess, because if they're not here, then it looks pretty bad for the Board to give them something and they're not here. I'm putting all that on me. So y'all think it's worth it for the, if you're the teacher, would you mind being up here, Linda, a day and a half without students?
Oh, let's see. I've been here three days. At the end of the school year.
Thursday, Friday without kids, amen.
We have to thank you for, a lot of districts have done some different things, but you know, we ask our teachers to blow up here on August the 6th, first day of school and have students in the classroom that morning first thing. And they overcame a lot of things. So I'm off for revising this calendar a little bit.
All right, so the recommendation is for students' last day to be Tuesday, full day Tuesday, or their last day will be Tuesday at 3:30. And then teachers will still have to be, will need to be here Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for their contract.
Okay.
Will Tuesday be early release?
No, it's full day.
So full day, so that's just, just wanted to clarify that.
So do I have a motion that our students go to school through Tuesday, full day, and then our teachers report Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday without students? Motion is made by Josh. Seconded by Scott, all four. Six oh.
Okay, we'll quickly get on that.
Yeah, because that's probably going to have, Ms. Orin's probably sorrying him, but I'm sorry, but we'll probably have to rearrange a few things. Robert?
We're getting tests on Thursday.
We'll make it work.
You did, didn't you?
It's all good.
Yeah, thank you. This is a thank you to the teachers. I know it don't sound like we're doing much, but we're stretching it.
All right.
That's our last point. We need to approve delegating higher authority to Dr. McCullough for contractual personnel for the remaining of May and the months of June and July.
As we currently have, we've got several positions open, as you know. We're, we want to have to fill the administrative position at the middle school, we have several teaching positions and coaching positions still in the high school, middle school, as well as several elementary positions available. So if you would, if you would do so, it would give me the opportunity to, when they find the person that makes the recommendation, that we can hopefully sign them to a contract quickly and not have them, make them have to wait a couple of weeks to be approved and give them the opportunity to go to another district, so.
So what that does is that just takes it off, you know, we don't have to look at it in a board meeting. He's, when it's done, that teacher or that coach doesn't have to say, well, I got to wait on the board meeting so I can go resign up here. When we hire them, game over.
And as you know, I'll update you for sure not before the Friday updates that I do each week of what's taking place.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve delegating the hiring authority to Dr. McCullough, our superintendent for contractual personnel for the remainder of this month here in May and for the months of June and July of 2021. Do I have a second by Robert, all four? All right, all need to action items, let's move on to our SHAC School Health Advisory Council. Mr. Dick, are you going to load us up?
Sure. I'm going to present the summary of the SHAC activities for the year, school year of 2020-2021. On February 4th, we had a SHAC meeting and we recognized the school counselors for National School Counseling Week. And we discussed information. And we discussed information concerning upcoming student programs, including the Top Youth Speakers, Play It Safe, and the Catch Program. On April twenty-sixth, we had a SHAC meeting and we reviewed the Mount Vernon ISD Wellness Plan, discussed programs and supplies for the upcoming school year and the SHAC budget. Some health and wellness programs that we did this year included the Fantastic Teeth Club that is sponsored by the Masons for first graders, and they give them a dental hygiene kit. Coordinated Approach to Child Health, that's our Catch. This is our coordinated school health curriculum used by pre-K through eighth grade students that promotes physical activity and health, healthy food choices. The Kids Heart Challenge is a fun and exciting event where students learn about their heart while helping raise money for the American Heart Association. Play It Safe is an evidence-informed, research-based, age-appropriate child abuse prevention program for students in pre-K or high school. Just Say Yes is a motivational program to equip students of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances with the knowledge and skills they need in order to achieve more healthy and successful futures. Esteem is encouraging students to embrace excellence until marriage. The Sexual Abstinence Program that they use for seventh grade that provides training and skill building to encourage students to make positive choices in their life. Growing Up and Always Changing is the puberty program for fifth grade students. We had a flu shot clinic for students and employees in October that Aurora Health came for. And we also had immunization clinics in August and April. Mobile mammograms were provided in January by UT Health. Christus St. Michael's Mobile Asthma Unit was here for pre-asthma screenings for students. And this is a grant-friendly program, and the school use, receives funds based on the student participation. Recommendations for the upcoming year include vaccination programs for employees and family members, a lab work, mammograms for women and male spouse, male spouses. Latna at East Texas Weight Loss Challenge. And student health programs and activities include flu shots and immunization clinics, the Fantastic Teeth Program for first graders, mobile asthma screening, Esteem Program for seventh graders, Growing Up and Always Changing Puberty Program for fifth graders, continue to use the Catch Program in kindergarten through eighth grade, and a motivational program for elementary, elementary, junior high, and high school students. And we wanted to keep our budget the same for the upcoming year of thirty-two hundred dollars. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tell those others that volunteer to be on, there's volunteers on that SHAC committee, right? Community members?
We need some.
Could use some more for sure.
Yeah.
I was going to say tell your others thanks, but I guess.
Do it.
I was going to say tell them thanks, but if he needs more, then.
It's hard to recruit people.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Digger. So let's go on and look at our enrollment totals.
Enrollment totals, since we talked about that a while ago, we are up a few, but we're setting at about, let's see, where are we? Fourteen ninety-one as of the tenth. So again, we're still, as we talked about earlier, we would much rather be closer to sixteen hundred than just trying to bump above fifteen hundred. So we'll see. I think we'll come back in August, give us a good idea in regard to some students that, and families who chose to homeschool this school year because of COVID. And with them coming back and see what else, what other students we have coming to the party. So. Where we are right now.
So it looks like this is probably going to the next, but we're going to graduate about ninety-two?
Ninety, ninety-two? What is the number?
Maybe it's actually ninety-one, but.
I didn't know.
I think so. Yeah.
So the plan for, I'm sorry, can I go to the next one?
Yes.
Sorry.
Wrong.
You said the graduation, maybe thank you. So we do, we are planning initially regular graduation, weather permitting. We are not going to space people out so they can come sit where they want to sit, mask or not mask according to what they want to do. The plan as of right now, that you wrote, correct me if I'm wrong, is that our plan is still to put them out on the field similar to what we did last year, maybe just not spread out so much so that way we'll open up the home and visitor side to increase capacity as well.
Okay.
Plan B, if weather interrupts, Mr. Glover is already printing some tickets, getting some tickets printed. So the capacity of the gymnasium, I want to think that number is six hundred and fifty. I believe that's correct, as Coach Floyd has already left, but I think that's what it is. So six hundred and fifty divided by ninety-one gives you.
Six, seven tickets each?
So we'll, we'll disperse those among the students, open up the auditorium to livestream for those who would like to go and see it there, and that would be the plan that we have to. Fourteen-day forecast calls for, I think, twenty-four percent rate. So that means seventy-six percent sunshine. That's what we're going for.
Okay. Here this year, if you get ten percent. Yep, we've watched some storms build in the past. All right. Well, that's all of our information items. So at this time, the Board will convene and close meeting to discuss personnel matters posted on the agenda and allow the Texas government code five five one oh seven four. The time right now is six eleven. Thank all y'all for being here. All right. Board now convenes back into forty-three P M. McCullough, do you have further business?
Yes, sir. Need to let you know of, consider two professional contracts, one for Luis Salvantes and one, a high school teacher, he's already a high school teacher, but he just finished some requirements that he needs to finish. So we did not extend a contract to him in March with other staff, so we're doing that tonight. As well as Jonathan Ladd, recommendation for a high school teacher and coach. And then you want to act on those first or?
Yep. So I have a motion that we approve Fuentes and Ladd as teachers. That was made by Scott. Seconded by Robert. All for that. Six oh.
Thank you. And then acknowledge resignations for Jordan Hollingsworth, Derek Tyson, Jason Clement, James Payne, and Lori Bolt.
Okay. Any further business? As many as adjourned that, seven forty-four P M.
Thank you.